Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of December 15, 2014. If you'd stand with me to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I can call upon the Clerk to read the roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Howell?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Hedges?
Here. Thank you. Item two is approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Yes.
Uh, approval of the minutes of our previous meetings. There is a work session on November 24th. Those minutes are in the packet. Any additions or corrections?
I will for approval, uh, oops, excuse me.
I would note that, uh, just for the record, uh, we've had very, had some very tough Pledge of Allegiance. We didn't do the Pledge of Allegiance before we had the workshop session. So, if we just strike that, I think maybe everything else is maybe now.
Oh, no. Yeah, I'll, I'll want for approval what the minutes as corrected.
I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the workshop as, as amended on November 24th. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. The minutes of our regular meeting on December 1st, uh, those are also in our packet. Any additions or corrections?
I move that we approve the minutes of the December 1st regular meeting. I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Thank you, uh, for the, to approve the minutes of the December 1st meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? And the closed session, those are circulated. Uh, any changes there?
I will for approval of the closed session minutes as presented.
I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the closed session minutes of December 1st. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on then to item four, accounts payable, uh, bills for the last couple of weeks. Any questions or concerns there?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I will second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable. And for this, we would need a roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Item five is citizen account, uh, comments for items that don't appear on the agenda. Any citizen who would like to address the council, this would be the time to do that. But as such, you state your name and keep your comments to about five minutes. Yeah, apparently done. We're, uh, yes, sir.
If I may, I'd like to, uh, clear up a rumor and misinformation out in the community of why I'm retiring. And I can assure you that the council, that it isn't because of the city manager. I want to make that perfectly clear because I'm hearing things out in the community and this is why I'm retiring. I would invite anyone to call me and I can sit down and talk to anyone about the reasons why I'm retiring. I just want to make it perfectly clear, it isn't because of the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for the council that did not appear on the agenda? Sign done, then we'll move on to item six, old business, our strategic goals report. Mr. Howell.
Thank you. The first item under strategic goals is promote accomplishments. And, uh, we had a little video that appeared, um, on YouTube that had something to do with our police department. And, um, I'm gonna play the video for you and then I'll let Chief Duke talk a little bit more about the experience.
Most of the contact police officers Saturday, the general public is on a traffic stop. And you can find out a lot about that person in that 10 to 15 yard window, whether they have a good day, a bad day, or a horrible day. And then we got this idea, what if we could change that person's day in real time? What if we could change that person's date right now?
Got all your Christmas shopping done?
No.
Oh, I haven't started. Yeah, she wants like Lego Friends. I don't know if you ever heard of them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, my daughter loves Lego Friends. They're great.
Lego what? Friends? Daughter loves Lego Friends?
Oh, my God. I've got three. Any other kids or just the one?
Oh, I got another one. Yeah, I got a son.
What does he want?
He, oh, you know, he's, he's only five.
Yeah.
So he has all these things that he wants that are unrealistic, like? I like nothing yet.
Like what?
This electric screw. Oh, my God. Yeah.
All righty, well, we'll, uh, open up the backseat of your truck.
Was I really getting pulled over?
Yeah, you got pulled over. You got illegal tenant windows.
Oh, my goodness, she just put that on her list.
Yeah, me, uh?
We just put her on the list.
In the high school.
Oh, my God. No way. Oh, my God, can I help you? So, am I getting it? I'm not getting a ticket, right?
I can give you one if you want. Get the opening, right? Have you tried those?
No.
Well, those may be bad. That's what I was hoping for, but I expect.
This is a thing.
What the heck? You can have that. And, and, and it's on YouTube, sir.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my God, you're kidding me. Oh, my God, I can't. That is so great. Thank you.
Something your little boy might like?
This just turned my bad day into a good one.
What? Yeah. Me too. No, it just fell off the back of a truck. You know, you didn't see the guy that was on his leg? Sorry, the rapt jowls are perfect, you know. It's a little windy out. Huh? Well, we got radios and sleighs and magic elves and stuff. And Xbox One.
Yeah.
That's what your kids want.
Yeah.
That's the go-to presents for your kid.
Yeah, but they're not gonna have it. Go look for it.
How's it curious? Yeah? Oh, my God. He's gonna love this. How about you? Huh? Looking at, uh, maybe a new TV. Like, we were talking about that for the room for our bedroom, the spoon wall here, knocking our LCD over. Oh, yeah? Cracked the entirely. So you need a new TV? Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Something like this? Yeah, something very similar to that. All right. Open up your door, boss. Are you scared of this? Yeah. Huh? You're welcome. Merry Christmas. Man, that's very nice of you. I mean, I've been pulled over by police officers before and they've always been good to me, but never this good.
The video on YouTube is at 2.5 million views. I posted it as of Saturday with you and the news organizations around the state, nation, and the world. It's, uh, somewhere near 25 million views. Um, the police department's been fairly busy answering the emails and things like that over the last week or so. Chief, perhaps you can, uh, expand on the experience a little bit?
If you would've told me this was gonna go worldwide, I would've laughed in your face. This was a project that Rob Bliss approached us with back in October. And I, we kinda joked around and it's crazy enough that it just might work. I really didn't think it would go as big as it did, uh, but Lowell, Michigan's on the worldwide map now because of this little video. And probably the most rewarding two days of our career. And then this week, it just picked up again and it was phenomenal. I, I cannot explain it. Do you have any questions for me here?
How did you keep that a secret for so long? That was amazing.
Well, we, we had to keep it on a need-to-know basis. And Mayor, I'm sorry you were getting all those complaints, but, uh, just, uh, myself, Officer Van Solkam, Detective Warren, and Mark Conwell knew about it.
Amazing.
As always, when people contacted me, I just said, uh, I'll look into it. I'll check it out. I'll get back with you. I don't know. And I didn't really. Once I met with all the business owners that following Friday and explained what we had done, they were, they were fine with it. And now after seeing the video, they're really fine with it. It's been a very rewarding week, probably the best week of my career.
When you see the, Michigan have success like this, having municipal numbers and departments like that, you really want to applaud that. And I certainly applaud Chief, uh, Police Department, Matt Jeff.
I knew a few other things. Info and infiltration, you approved moving forward at the past meeting and, uh, we don't have a little bit more discussion about that today with the, uh, engineers. So that's, that's moving forward. Downtown development plan, um, I had written that the final payment cost estimates would be presented for the year as January meeting, but just as a Friday and then today, um, we're working with a consultants to try to flush out more, um, more graphics and maybe a little bit more before we actually work with the steering committee on the cost estimates. So it might be a February, maybe a meeting issued out rather than a January. Um, so anyway, that's what I wrote and maybe a little bit different. And then, uh, you know, my, the pending council projects.
Certainly, yes. Nice to be with you.
Yes, sir. Um, and the only issue there is alignment is holding the engineers setting the meeting to discuss next steps. So that's moving forward as well.
Okay. Put that on events for some time soon enough. Any questions or concerns of our whole business of the city managers? Sign done, then we'll move on to item seven, seven A, ordinance amendment. Considering obrees.
Thank you, yes. Um, the properties at, uh, three, um, eighteen, three twelve East Main, basically the old security furniture building, uh, the properties have been, uh, the building has been split, so it's two separate properties. And the home land is an L-shaped property that includes the parcel that's behind Lowell Granite that is the subject of, um, the potential sale that ultimately would result in us being able to, uh, look out for a parking lot in behind, um, the old boost. We're talking about old buildings, but anyway, at the Southland Road parking lot. Um, in order for us to approve the property split, the, the property would have to be zone C2 and not industrial. And it's the intention of the, uh, property owner to move forward with a commercial type development in that building anyway. So we went to the planning commission to, um, ask to have that property rezoned, a public hearing, and they had recommended, uh, that it be rezoned to you. And, uh, you would, uh, if you're in favor of, I would complete that action by adopting the ordinance that's approved. Or ordinance.
All right. Any questions?
I move that we adopt ordinance fourteen oh three.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to adapt fourteen oh three. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Thank you. Item D, backhoe replacement.
Thank you. We, uh, developed specifications and sought bids to replace our very old and very aging backhoe. Um, we received, uh, three bids, two of them met our specifications and one did not. The two that we received were from AIS Construction Equipment and Michigan CAD. Uh, our specs included a base mount plus options for auxiliary hydraulics and four-wheel drive instead of two-wheel drive. Um, we also asked them to quote trade-in value, but after reviewing the bids, felt that we might be able to do a little bit better or, or at least take that chance to do better by putting the current backhoe on auction rather than trading it in. Um, so what's before you is the, uh, the bids with, without the trade-in. Uh, AIS Construction Equipment at ninety-four thousand six hundred per John Deere three ten S K. And then Michigan CAD at ninety-eight thousand six thirty-six for Caterpillar four point F. Um, following the opening of bids, our equipment operators visited and operated the machines, reported that their preference was the John Deere, which was also a little bid. Um, in our equipment replacement plan, we planned on, um, uh, a hundred thousand dollars to replace the backhoe this year and then to finance the cost of that replacement over a 10-year period. Um, where the city treasurer and the city attorney are working, in fact, a lot is going, either went out today or is going out tomorrow, um, to, uh, I think it was from about seven to eight different, uh, banks to, uh, receive bids on the financing piece of it. There's a process that you have to walk through to do that. Um, but in the meantime, uh, we wanted to at least knock in the purchase with AIS Construction. And so we're recommending, um, that you authorize the purchase of the John Deere three ten S K backhoe from AIS Construction for ninety-four thousand eight hundred. Um, one thing that I will add is that this is a very, very short summary of a, I would say a pretty intensive process. Um, and I've worked with, uh, Dan and also the city mechanic, Ralph Reckon, who's in the audience today, and, and really pushed the idea of, is this the machine that we need? Is this more than we need? Why can't we replace the current backhoe based on, um, that current specifications? And, uh, there was a lot of discussion and, um, and, uh, really a lot of, I think, maybe tough questions that I asked to get us to this point. And, um, and I certainly appreciate, uh, Dan's work, but I really appreciate, uh, Ralph, uh, Mr. Reckon, your work on, on this and, uh, really going through and spending some time and looking at the different types of machines that would be out there and what capabilities were needed for, for our operations and, and whether or not, um, you know, if we purchase this backhoe, it could be used for other things other than just right now. We're, actually, right now, we're not using it currently for anything, but, um, digging cemetery graves and, uh, um, that thing that we always mentioned that, uh, breaks and gets wet in the middle of the street. So, uh, again, I, you know, appreciate the, the work that went into this. Um, I really ran them through the wringer in terms of, uh, is this what we really need? Because it's really a lot of money. And, uh, um, based on all of that, I'm quite satisfied that we're there and we've gone through a great process and appreciate the work.
Sounds like you did due diligence. I just want to note that it says ninety-four six hundred and you said, uh, ninety-four eight hundred. That actual bid was for ninety-four thousand six hundred.
Yes, the eight hundred is a typo.
Just to be sure that's correct. Yep, yeah. It's a mistake.
I, I get one question, Mark. Um, did you try to go through this, the state of Michigan, you know, with the, like we did on the pickup? Where they all have everything else, you know, pre-bid? And is this cheaper than that?
You know what? I didn't do a comparison. I assumed that this is the actual my bid price, but the, the answer to your first question is that, yes, we had a lot of discussion about just going right through my deal and just taking the my deal price. And I, I wanted to put it out for the, and, and have them even bid against that my deal price and see if we can get a more rate. And that was something that I wanted to do and I never checked to see whether or not we actually beat to my bid price.
Yeah, I just wanted to know because we're supposed to be trying to save as much as we can.
Exactly.
They spend all the time just back in the mouth of doing the work for you, so you don't have to do that.
Right.
And I did, I'm just, just sort of wondering.
Yes. And, and that's something I can double check and then get back to you. Maybe Ralph will sort of cover this head. Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, it sounds like you did your homework, so I, I, I would like to, that we authorize the purchase of the John Deere backhoe for ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to accept this bid of ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item C, Kent Intermediate School District, uh, collection of summer property taxes.
This is an annual, uh, request, an annual act where Kent ISD asks that we collect their taxes. And, uh, we don't charge no fee, but any interest we receive from the money while we're holding it before we distribute it to them, we keep that interest in exchange for the fee. There will be a similar request from, uh, the community college, Grand Rapids Community College, but we haven't received that yet.
I move that we approve the request from KISD to collect the two thousand fifteen summer property taxes.
I will second.
Second. Thank you. Been moved and seconded to, uh, collect the taxes for Kent Intermediate School District, uh, two thousand fifteen. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Item C, or item D, uh, fire department, this is a good way to approach.
Um, the, the SCBA equipment is, uh, it's basically the air, the apparatus. There is a, um, pack that you wear, um, and then there are tanks or canisters that are a part of that equipment as well. And, um, you have the ability to change all those canisters while you're, um, you know, at the scene of a, at the scene of a fire. Um, the fire department has, um, tried three times to obtain funding through a, um, FEMA grant. And, uh, at the last time that they replaced this equipment in, uh, two thousand and two, um, they were able to replace it with, uh, with a FEMA grant. And so, so the equipment is, so the newest equipment that they have is, uh, goes all the way back to two thousand and two. Um, they attempted to work with, um, some other municipalities and that third, and that third FEMA grant that they applied for, they were turned down. Um, I think I heard at the meeting today that there's at least one municipality that is still moving forward and they'd like to go in together with the other municipality, which helps to, to keep the cost down. Um, the, uh, Fire Board had quite a bit of discussion about it today and, um, tried to get an idea of what the drop dead date is for having to replace this equipment. And, um, one of the, one of the things that you run into is that if you try to phase it in, then you're, you're possibly dealing with two different types, um, which can cause some, um, some issues, which can, can create some confusion because you can't take a canister from a newer, um, backpack and put it on one of the old ones. So, uh, I guess the end result, and I'm not going into a lot of detail. I can, a lot of it's in the letter that was already put together and distributed to you. It was all emailed in as well. But the end result of the conversation today at the fire authority is that they, um, they recommended, um, replacement of the equipment based on whether or not the municipalities were, um, able to produce the funding for it. And we're talking about a total of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I think, was the total that you felt, or, or a hundred?
Eleven.
Hundred and eleven, that's right. A hundred and thirty-four.
That got produced this week.
Yeah. So it would be a hundred and eleven if action was taken by December 30th. Um, so the other two municipalities are, are looking at it tonight as well. Um, the other thing that they're going to look at between now and December 30th is whether or not, uh, it could be financed. And, um, somebody's gonna be following up on that and, 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 and options. Um, that's sort of my quick summary. Councilmember Mayor is your representative on the fire authority and I, I don't feel anything to add.
And it's, uh, it's a little different than the letter explains. It's not that the air cylinders themselves are out of date, it's the frames that hold the cylinders are out of date. They're not manufactured anymore. You can't get parts for them anymore. They're outdated. The cylinders are fine, but the pressures the cylinders hold don't agree with every other municipality. We're the only ones left with these three thousand PSI's. Everybody else has got forty-five hundred. So they can't just switch them out because they, they're not the same equipment. We better work to that, though. Okay. It's, it looks different on here. It looks like it's just the cylinders, not the cylinder.
Are, um, is there gonna be any more? I mean, by the packs, um, what about filling them in that? Is that, uh, still adequate?
Yeah, that, all the equipment we have currently would go away. That a hundred and eleven thousand would include everything it would take to keep them cylinders good for the next fifteen years. And if you update every two to three years, you could extend the life from fifteen to thirty years on that. Initial hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It's quite a good deal, but you just have to keep continuing updates. The old system didn't have the updates. It's another reason why I pay so much now.
Is that a hundred? Go ahead.
I thought the compressor had to be changed too. I thought the discussion was that the compressor had to be changed to, to accommodate the forty-five hundred.
That is?
Sorry, wrong?
I can look my notes. I'm not sure on that one. I'll give that compressor.
I attended the, uh, meeting also. And I think there's, there's problems there, but they, uh, the fire authority didn't really have much of a plan. Well, these canisters were basically out of date in two thousand and two, but there was a four-year, four-year renewal on it. Correct me if I'm getting this wrong, but then after two thousand and six, there was another four-year renewal. And then, uh, we've gone two years beyond that. So they had plenty of time to tell us that it need to be a budgeted item for this year. Um, the townships, one of them is hurting for bucks. The other one's gonna bring it to their board, but there was apprehension. Um, finally, the, the board did talk about financing, but it wasn't clear whether they could legally finance or would have to come back to the municipalities to, to do the financing. So personally, I think we should table this thing and table it. There's a deadline of December 31st. We certainly can have a 10-minute meeting once they find out what our strategy should be. And I'd much rather give the townships a time to think about it also. It's like the fire truck, if you will. Same thing again.
Yeah.
And, um, at least, um, the pricing is good through the 31st. Let's find out what the townships, what their position is, and then let's possibly schedule another meeting and resolve it at that, that point.
It isn't, it isn't that it's, the equipment's not, hard to say, it's just out of compliance.
Right. Right.
So.
A silly question. Is a hundred and eleven thousand per ended, per?
No.
That's the total. So each, each group is gonna have to, each township city is responsible for a third of that. Okay.
And just for your information, Tim Whitlock is out of town, so he missed the meeting altogether. Jerry Hill was there.
Okay.
And expressed that he would be going to his board, uh, and knowing that there's some apprehension there. So I'm not sure if we should table it and not act in haste.
I would make a motion to table it.
I would agree. The other municipalities are just getting this information tonight as well, so.
That's a second.
Yes.
Any other, go ahead, have discussion?
Yes. I agree.
That's fine with me. Table?
That's been moved and seconded to table. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Yeah, let's table it. Thank you. I look forward to maybe getting something on that, uh, before the end of the year yet and have a special meeting if it may be. Moving on to item eight, monthly reports. Those are in the packet from our various departments. Any questions concerning monthly reports? Item nine, council comments. Mr. Ringer.
Hi, as you heard, the fire board met today. The next meeting will be the 12th of January. Like I said, the other municipalities have yet to meet on this information that just came out today. We made a motion to move the meetings today from the third Monday to the second Monday because, uh, the other guys are getting the information the same day and having to be forced to make decisions and, uh, things. And it will help to, we get some pressure they have and what's going on now. Say no, but at least we can advance it and give them some kind of, you know, some kind of leeway. Um, we're working, we're going to be working with, uh, the attorneys and banks and whatnot to see what kind of financing is available if it's all possible.
to see what kind of financing is available, if it's all possible, where there's a, from what I understand, the conflict of whether or not you're allowed to borrow from a bank. I don't know how that works, that's probably my area, but they're looking into that, and they're possibly going to try that. The hundred and eleven thousand is also for eighteen fully-equipped SCBA's, base mask, the back frame, the tank, and everything. That's eighteen of them, it's not for like six, so it's a good deal, from what you're getting on, but I guess. This is pretty, pretty close up. Anything else?
Go ahead. All right. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Airport worded that last, last week, and had a really good meeting. They did a cleanup out there, as you know, and they actually did a really good cleanup. It's really nice out there now. I mean, it's totally, totally night and day. They got a lot of, lot of plans, and they're still working on the, I can't remember, what's the name of the contract that we have to have?
Oh, fixed base operator.
Yeah, the fixed base, we're still working on that. Casey, Casey didn't like some of the wording, and we have someone there that makes a big difference, and so we're still working on that, and other than that, that's all I do with me.
That's great. Thank you.
Nice job, chief.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
The planning commission discussed the superior property and resolved that, and that's been forwarded and approved, so made some progress there. The latter meeting, we reviewed the final plans for, or final proposals for the trail work to connect Lowell to the trails being proposed, and that final planning will be forwarded to the funding agencies. Hopefully, they've got a big budget coming up, but that'll be in, I believe, twenty sixteen, so that's well underway. And I made a note that, to talk about the police department, and I was very surprised when it hit London and Sydney, Australia, I believe it was, but I would, I would like to thank Rob Bliss, he's not getting a whole lot of credit in this thing, it's all about the police, but the, I appreciate the creative thinking that went behind that, and I'm glad he was creative enough to sell the chief on the whole thing. Anyway, it was very nice to see you. I watched Police Chief in New York on Fox TV, I never watch Fox TV, but fortunately, they, it was on Facebook, that it was going to be on Fox TV, so I tuned it in, and I tuned up, I could be as much as I could, and knew when to watch it, and I actually watched it twice. Once at eight o'clock in the evening, and once at five in the morning. Fortunately, I'm retired, so I don't have to worry about the clock. Anyway, very nice, Lowell Police Department, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allison.
Let's see, the historic district, district commission did not meet, and the Arbor Board has not met. We are still planning, even though there's not a lot of funding, to go ahead and work on our tree plan, to present that to the city council. The DVA met, and it was a brief meeting, mostly they discussed the potential parking lot that we've been working on. No promises, but it is a priority, and it is moving forward, so that was a good thing to hear about. The LCTV committee met, we reviewed the progress reports for the past year's grants, and there will probably be a recommendation forthcoming about working with the council when we do something like we did previously about, you know, not offering any money for grants, so maybe a process so that everyone is on the same page. There are no surprises there, so that will probably be forthcoming. I also wanted to say how proud I am of our police department, I mean, that was very exciting, but at this time of the year, I also want to admit, I am, and to say to everyone that I am proud of all the departments of the city. Everyone does a great job. We have super parks, we have award-winning water, you know, we have a great wastewater treatment plant, and we have so much to be proud of, and the police, you know, got their day in the sun, and it was well deserved, but not to neglect any of the other departments, this is a super department, we have a great city manager, and I'm very proud of everyone. And I'd like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone in the city and beyond.
Thank you. Lowell Light Power Board met last week and reviewed the review of policies, reviewed the section five covering customer accounts, billing, and administrative policies, and they were reviewed by the board, and then also, we continue to make, reading from Greg Pierce's notes here, we continue to make progress on the biodigestive project, majority of the construction work is complete, and we're in the startup and testing phase. There's many things going on, but we'll be looking forward to having some power sometime after the first of the year, so things are going very well at Lowell Light and Power. Chamber of Commerce, Santa Claus is in town, and great doings down at the showboat, as well as all throughout downtown, so I encourage everyone to support your local merchant, and spend some bucks right here in Lowell, you don't have to go far. The Look Memorial Fund did meet in the end of November and granted four different distributions. Lowell Area Arts Council received ten thousand dollars for building Capitol Campaign, Lowell Area Fire Department, two thousand dollars for a twelve-thousand-pound winch. Lowell Area Historical Museum, five thousand dollars to hire some work done for data entry work on their, their computer system, and the American Legion, five thousand dollars towards that Civil War cannon restoration project, so things continue on with the various nonprofits, and the Lowell Look Fund is very pleased to support these efforts in making our community a much better place. And again, best wishes for a great Christmas and a happy new year as we move into a new year and new challenges, and again, thank you, chief, for your efforts and not letting me know, so I didn't have to spill any beans or anything else, but I was as dumbfounded as anybody. My wife did see her perch over there in Pink Melling, she said, "Boy, the cops have been busy today, I wonder what's up." Well, we found out, so it's all good. And again, thank you very much for all of that, and I heard from some friends I hadn't heard from in a very long time, so...
So did I.
And with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Long for the water distribution supervisor position, wow, to Jeff Van Setters. Jeff is, now I've written him a report, he's currently working for the city of Kentwood, that was as of last Thursday, he started today, and spent the day with Bob, and is excited to be here, and we're excited to welcome him to the team. He's been a water distribution for six years with the city of Kentwood, and then spent three years as a pipe layer for a private company. The director of public works position has been posted, we're accepting his remains through January ninth, the day of final candidates selected before March. A copy for public review of the draft metropolitan transportation plan, the MTP, is available at City Hall, it's something that is developed for the region by Grand Valley Metro Council, it looks at priorities for the next twenty-five years in Kent and eastern Ottawa counties. Just a reminder for council members, I sent a couple of emails today regarding your January workshop, I did meet with Peter Lettsman, had a discussion with him, he, his contact information, and I've also sent him your contact information to the bank to speak with each of you individually, so he can put together your January workshop in a way that the council desires for it to be, so he worked entirely on that, I'm just going to sit in the background for his workshop. And then finally, I will be out of the office during the weeks of Christmas Day and New Year's Day. During that time, we're traveling to Virginia to visit our daughter and granddaughter, and I just want to wish her a good, happy holidays.
Thank you. Looking out to appointments, there are several to be reappointed as the end of the year draws, and these will be for three-year appointments, Airport Board, General Mayor, Building Authority, Mark Howe, Construction Board of Appeals, Dan Nissjardan, as well as Greg Campfield, Downtown Development Authority, Mike Springer, as well as Mike Larkin, Downtown Historic District, Nancy Wood and Steve Doyle, LCTV Endowment Board, Dennis Kent, and Parks and Recreation Commission, Sue Popper and Nancy Anderson. And then as well, for the Board of Appeals, I'd like to nominate Nancy Wood to fill the full-time position, and we still have an alternate position available, so those are my recommendations and appointments for these boards and commissions. Hope I have approval.
A move for approval of the, as you described.
I'll second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. And with that...
I move that we go into closed session, as allowed under the Open Meetings Act, to discuss union negotiation strategy.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, and to go into a closed session, requires a roll call vote, so ask the clips to read the roll.
Councilmember Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes.
Thank you.